All right. Good evening. Can I have the roll call, please?
Gibson, Kapler.
Here.
Ormsby. Satterfield. Skiff.
Here.
Stoltenberg.
Here.
Windland.
Here. All right. We had minutes from the meeting of April 16th, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of the minutes from April 16th as submitted.
Second.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the meeting of April 16th, 2025. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we all in favor. The minutes are approved. And good evening and welcome, everyone. We have one person in the audience. Thank you for coming tonight. You could have sat in the front row, no extra charge. We are the Planned and Zone Commission, appointed by the mayor to review site plans, zoning requests, and many other things. So with that, Taylor, we will begin.
Thank you, Chairman. Our first case on the agenda tonight is a final plat of Ridgehaven First Edition. Applicant is Adam Sykes, Pheasant Creek Estates, LLC. This was a review as a preliminary plat last month at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it's approved and subsequently approved by city council. So we have the final plat before you. It is a 27 lot residential subdivision just north of Crow Creek Road, near Pleasant Hills Elementary. The zoning, our future land use is neighborhood light and the zoning is R2 single family. This is the preliminary plat. I will mention that there's a detailed concept related to the rezoning, which was materially similar. They added four lots to the buying some, a little bit more land. And the preliminary plat is nearly identical to the final plat. Lots range from .4 acres to .8 acres. They'll mostly be basement walkouts. You have a fairly steep entrance road going up the hill and then ending at the northern property line. Future development to the north will connect that road to an existing road with an existing development. Stormwater is detained in three areas, which are to be maintained by the Homeowners Association. Really nothing new here at all from the preliminary plat, so I can take any questions. Staff has recommended approval of this. I can take questions.
All right. Thank you, Taylor. Mark, anything since presentation or publication? All right. Questions and comments from the commission, please? I had one general question, and I wrote it on the front of the form yesterday, and then we had a three or four inch or five, depending on which gauge you look at at my house rain. But my note was drainage from the north. And the rest of that thought process is where's it going to go? So when you look at the aerial, if you could put that one up, Taylor, that had the, there we go. So we've got the two components of this development here. And then there's another, I'll call it agricultural or plowed area up there. And I think it's all going up gradient, if I'm, if I'm correct. I don't know if it drops back down or not. I couldn't read the lines there to see.
And Brent might have a little better understanding of topography.
My concern was just looking at it and knowing the slope and everything, a lot of water comes down there. So if there's water starting farther up than where this subdivision's starting, how is that subdivision now accepting that water? Over the years, the 20-some years I've lived here, I've actually seen that farm field flow over the retaining wall and end up on Crow Creek Road before. So is there anything being done to mitigate heavy water flows that come from up gradient there, Brent? Or do we need to?
Yes, they do need to. I'm trying to pull up in the grading plan I just did here. So there's two detention basins that you can see on either side. Some of that actually does channel, actually a fair amount of that north channels to that west basin. It doesn't all go run right down the road. I can see the contours starting to wrap towards that basin. And then there is a fair amount of drainage that runs along the rear of those lots that will head right to the creek. So they have to account for that. That's called pass-through flow.
Okay.
They don't have to detain for it because it's not their water. So what that allows them to do is it doesn't make their basin any bigger, but it'll upsize the pipe without boring you with a whole bunch of hydrology here. And then ultimately, obviously, when that develops, they will detain their own water. But they do need to account for anything that's coming onto the site.
Okay. And second question, do we have any kind of slope or gradient restrictions? Because that is, it's noted a pretty steep entrance.
Eight percent is our max street.
Eight percent, okay.
And that's where they are at in two or three locations.
Okay.
For comparison's sake, we have streets like 14th Street, for example, just by the abbey.
Yep.
Nearly 15%.
Oh, wow. Okay.
So our current restrictions are much, much less than what several streets in town are.
Already are.
Same thing. It's about a consistent 14% slope. So eight percent is steep, but it's nothing like what we have in several other areas of the city.
Yep. Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else in the commission? That's easy. How about even in the audience with regard to this case? Nope. All right. Come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case 25-014, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 25-014-PP, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Same sign. All right. Case 25-014 is recommended for approval. All right. That takes us to 25-022.
Thank you, Chairman. Another final plat. This is Blackstone First Edition. This was also a preliminary plat reviewed at the April Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. The applicant is Windmill Development. This is the, the final plat is for the first phase of the 88 lot residential subdivision. So this is 49 lots of that subdivision, located just in our newly annexed area, north of Forest Grove Drive, west of Wells Ferry Road, and south of Interstate 80. The property is proposed to be rezoned from A1 to R2 and A1 to C3. Those are going through, the first reading of that was last night to council, so there'll be two more readings. So this plat would not be reviewed at council until the final reading, the earliest. The preliminary plat was for this entire area. It does include one commercial lot in that C3 area, a couple, utility lot, we'll call it, for the city's lift station that will be due to us. The future land use really aligns with the proposed zoning. We have neighborhood light, green space, open space parks along the creek, community commercial, and then a civic public where future Pleasant Valley Schools owns that property. Proposed zoning is just, as I mentioned, R2 and C3 to the north. The preliminary plat, I went over this last month, which is just to kind of rehash, but we have all, you know, four cul-de-sacs, 88 lots, two access points onto Wells, one onto Wells Ferry and one onto Forest Grove Drive. There's our lift station lot with an access road. It's a giant flag lot. And then the lot to the north would be the commercial lot for future development. The final plat, no significant changes for the first phase. It just includes 49 of those lots. Includes an access easement for, to Wells Ferry Road. So that's for the Phase 1. When Phase 2 gets in, they'll build the road. They'll be coordinated with the fire department. The access, that access aligns with Timber Ridge Lane, shown on the preliminary plat. This is a three-page final plat, a little unique. I will note, there was one change on a road name. Woodfield Court has been, was on the preliminary plat. It's a cul-de-sac on the west turn portion, was renamed to Ironwood Court. There was some conflict, naming conflicts in other parts of Bettendorf, just to make a little, no confusion for 911 or mailing, et cetera. And I mentioned the Spencer Creek Lift Station. That lot was actually, number was changed to 100 to make sure it was, it's not a, it's basically a utility lot. And that will be deeded to the city upon approval. I mentioned floodplain at the review of the preliminary plat. So there's floodplain and floodway on Spencer Creek that has been contemplated with this preliminary plat, and all proper permitting will be required. No, nothing's proposed in the floodway, but we have the ability to permit locally for anything in the floodplain on the south and north sides of the creek. With that, staff recommends approval of case 25-22, and I can take any questions.
Thank you, Taylor. Appreciate it. Mark, anything from your perspective on that?
Nothing out on this one. Pretty straightforward.
All right. Thank you. Questions and comments from the commission, please?
I have one question.
Yeah.
Taylor, can you show me on whichever map you choose, where the easements are for this lift station?
So, yeah, it's not, it's actually not an easement. It's a, they have.
Service road?
They've taken it, made it a lot. So here's the overall one, but it, I'll follow my line. That's all one lot. And then there's a rectangle where the actual lift station is. And that's actually already there. Well, it's there. It's being still finishing construction. So the road's already there. It's gravel road. Right now, it exists as an easement, obviously, for us to access it on their property, but they will put it as a lot and then give it to us.
It's a little hard to see because it's so narrow.
Yeah.
I think it's only about 30 foot wide until you actually get to the lift station. So at a scale that large.
You can see a little bit here.
Yeah.
Just looks like a line, but it is a, there you go.
Yep, there you can kind of see the.
That comes off of Wells Ferry.
Correct.
So it's on the downhill, going down Wells Ferry Road.
Almost to the bridge.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So while we're talking about access, was that it? Are you heading?
Go ahead.
While we're talking about access, and then on the analysis, it's talking about the, due to the number of single-family homes for its phase, will require to be constructed as a fire access lane. Can you show me where that fire access lane will go?
Right here.
Right there. So that'll be off of Wells Ferry as well.
Yep. And that's just, often we've had those as temporary accesses. They're not built to, they don't have a, they just need to hold a fire apparatus.
Yeah. But given some of the experience we've had off Forest Grove and that ability to get in and out and everything, that's pretty critical. So, and that, that works for the fire department.
Yeah. Yeah. One, yes, sir.
Great. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. That's it? Anybody else?
I have a couple of questions. Taylor, you mentioned the one change on a name. Are there other changes?
There really aren't any other. There were some easements that had to be, I believe, labeled. I mean, really minor. Nothing, not change, not material changes in lot sizes or anything of that, configuration. And correct me if I'm wrong, Brent, anything on the technical side?
No.
This is really a.
No, other than easement cleanup, which is normal when we go from preliminary to final.
And then one other question is generic, and that has to do with floodplain. When was this floodplain for the whole city created? What's the age of that?
So this is, shown on the screen is the, an aerial with the flood insurance rate map. That's the FEMA floodplain map that everyone knows. That map has, it's updated every so often.
That's, that's what I was curious is, when was the last update?
It was actually last April, April 11th of 2024. So they actually had purchased, I believe the developer had purchased the property or had a contract on the property. And in this case, most parts of Bettendorf, the floodplain actually, or floodway decreased overall. This was one area where there was an increase in that floodway.
I thought it was out of fashion to decrease these days.
Yeah, as far as, and we're talking about geographic area, not necessarily depth, water depth or anything of that. That's based on, you know, FEMA models this on elevation. So they have increased or better elevation from either different remote sensing. They use LiDAR, which gets really accurate topography. And then they also update their hydraulic models. So for this particular area, I'm, it's above me as far as what the exact variables increase this particular area. There is ways to, you know, appeal, not appeal that, well, you can appeal it at the time or provide a different modeling, but it's pretty intensive and it goes through FEMA and even the core for review of that. And the developers decided not to do that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I have just one comment. On the general notes, item 17, I think it's on the final plat that way as well. Let me see. Final plat, general.
Page three.
Notes. Yes. It's number six there. But I love that chart. That tells me what each outlot and lot, its intended use, and who's responsible for it. If we don't do that everywhere, we probably should. I just thought that was awesome. Because I look at these things like, okay, who's going to be responsible for that? And what's it for? And I love that. So.
The consistent comment we've had through our subdivision plots, yep, at least in the past few years. And this is a very clean version of that. And especially in the, with this subdivision, it's sized. It's one of our larger subdivisions, and it's kind of some complex topography and stormwater. So they have, you know, through, and it has a city outlot that's being deeded to, you know, there's just a lot of unique things.
Nice. I like it. Yeah. Very, very functional. So appreciate that. Anyone else? Anyone in the audience with regard to this case? Okay, back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of case 25-022, the final plat, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 25-022, final plat, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Thank you. Case 25-022 is recommended for approval. And now we have our personnel switch. Greg, welcome.
Thank you. We have case 25-021. It is a site development plan for 3227 Centennial Court. It is located west of Leclerc Manufacturing, First Edition, east of Centennial Court, and north of US 67. And you can see it here, outlined that lot. There is Lot 12. It is an application for Morris Holdings LLC, and it is for a two-unit building to house a contractor condominium as well as a warehouse. You can see the way that these break out here. The different land uses essentially, the entire area is industrial for land use, which permits the I-2 zoning. The I-2 zoning is prevalent throughout, and then there's I-3 zoning adjacent to it here on the east, but I-2 is surrounding it on the west, north, and south sides. The comprehensive plan goal three entails economic development as a goal, and to attract and retain business is what is being met by this particular proposal. These are the lots essentially throughout the ZZ or JJZ addition, as it was platted. There's a Centennial Court right-of-way here, which ends in a cul-de-sac. And then there is a 50-foot wide, 55-foot wide drainage easement that comes down alongside of this particular lot. And that is an area that will allow the conveyance of stormwater. This is a 35,099 square foot lot. 20,000 square feet is the required lot size for a minimum in I-2. The building is 40 by 150 feet. And then there is a drive on the west side that will connect these two lots. And the business here, Morris, will own this area here as part of the warehouse and use that. The front part will be rented out as a contractor condo. This is a two-unit building. The floor area ratio permitted in this area is 150%. Maximum lot coverage 50%. They're well within those thresholds. The building is 16 feet at this level here, and then it rises to approximately 20 feet at the apex. This site was platted with a condition on it that there be no parking permitted as part of the thoroughfare and access. Even though that has not been codified in an ordinance, it was a condition placed upon the approval of this subdivision. The connection of a proposed drive to further connectivity between these two lots shall require at some point an access agreement, easement, and then for other considerations for parking and stormwater conveyance. Water supply will come from the west side of the lot through an 8-inch main. Sanitary sewer connection is actually on this side of Centennial Court. Electrical services will come from a box that is located right here, within the southwest corner. There is no pedestrian travel within a number of these subdivisions, as this is industrial. The number of clientele that do come to these sites and a number of employees drive to the actual location and go to the actual parcel, and then they stay there. So there's very little interaction. If there's any trail mechanism along US 67, it will be along the south side. But there is nothing anticipated on the north side for that. Parking, there are 10 spaces required, breaking down the office area as well as the warehousing element. 11 spaces are provided. There's one ADA space, and there's enough parking within the parameters of this locale. Stormwater detention, again, essentially, the stormwater will be conveyed to a water quality element within this area, and then that water will be dissipated and flow into this easement area, which will come out and then flow along the right-of-way of US 67. And then that will be conveyed eventually into Crow Creek. The idea is to outlet the stormwater here during an event, so to get down there to Crow Creek more quickly before the onslaught of water comes down from further up the watershed on Crow Creek. So that's the idea of having that water flow out as opposed to being detained. Three factors are met. Three for streetscaping along the front of Centennial Court. And then there are two on the interior that were required for the vehicular use area. And as always, lighting shall be required to be downcast. And staff recommending this proposal, we view that it meets goal three of the economic development to attract and retain businesses. Staff would also add the single condition that an easement agreement shall be recorded at Scott County Recorder's Office to guarantee drive access, shared parking areas, and stormwater conveyance is permitted between lots 12 and 13 of the JJZ addition. This agreement shall be recorded before the issuance of any building permits for Lot 12. I would ask, are there any questions?
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. I'm going to look at you, Mark, but I don't think so.
Another straightforward one.
Pretty straightforward. Yeah. Yeah. These are, these are almost several cookie cutters down there, aren't they? Yeah. Yeah. All right. Thank you. Questions or comments from the commission? Oh, you did. Yeah, sorry.
This parking thing, and maybe because I'm new, is confusing. You mentioned 10, but that first sentence, one for every two employees, that, that confused me. So if you will.
We, we've had in our parking code, and this, this goes back quite a way, almost probably about 1971 even. And it was a carryover when we had the rewrite of our zoning ordinance in 2017. So there's an idea here that there's, not everybody is somehow driving to this locale. We're trying to conserve on parking as well. We don't want to overpark an area and have more impervious surface. So it's somewhat of a compromise, I think, that got built into the code.
But you clearly stated, and rightfully so, sidewalks are not an option. So it's not a walkable location. And if these are employees, that their physical job duties there, as opposed to, you know, three of them on an airplane and four, you know, go directly to a customer site, that's a difference. But if all 10, or whatever the number is, going specifically there, and, and you got a parking space of one to two, I don't get it.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's what the code is, and we have to follow it pretty much as to what it is. We cannot obligate them to do more than what the code says. But if you do look at the uses, the eastern half of this is going to be a warehousing element, a continuation of the building that is further to the south, the Morris Building. So in essence, the employees are really in the one building. This is going to be more for storage in this area. Parking will be conserved for one half of the building primarily. And then the other half, the number of employees that were anticipated in here probably is not going to necessitate much more parking than what you see on the west side of the building.
So, so some other employees would actually go to a different building?
Commissioner, or Mr. Chairman, I just jumped in, maybe, just to have a little clarity on what's going on here. So Morris Company, which is an HVAC mechanical repair company, install, repair, to my knowledge, they own the lot just to the south. Yep, just to the south. They, they have a style of business where it's not, it's not customer-centric at the location. They, they drive away to their customers. So their employees come to work. They have fleet vehicles consisting of pickup trucks and repair vans, for the most part. Then they, the employees then use those for the day, sorry, use those for the day, and then come back from their, from their work and take their employee vehicle home and, or their personal vehicle home, and then park their, their work vehicle back on site. His business appears to be growing. So what he's doing is he's buying the ground next to him. He's going to use that for storage for his fleet vehicles and his, you know, kind of free up those employees to park maybe more remotely and then grab the fleet vehicles, go out, do their work for the day. So this probably is improving the parking situation overall. I would agree with you, Commissioner, that the parking code is clunky and hard to understand and hard to apply. We're working on that one. But I think in practicality, what's going to happen here will improve parking in our industrial park, not make it worse. He's actually doing it to make it better. He's going to buy that lot. He's going to move his fleet vehicles to one lot or the other, apparently, and put his, park his employees someplace else and kind of get out of his own way, I think, you know, when he does that every morning. So that should, overall, the practical effect should be an improved parking in this location. And I think a discussion on our parking code is forthcoming and well, well worth it.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
The logic of your question was good. Yes. Yeah. Anyone else in the commission? Anyone in the audience with regard to this? Yes, sir?
As Mark said, the guy does own the lot to the south, so he's kind of aware of the parking already. I texted Chris, asked if he knew how many employees was expected. He just, he's like, not many. So we, we believe we're already showing more parking than what will actually be needed, very much so for the uses, Mark said.
All right. Thanks for the clarification. Anyone else? All right. Back to the commission, then.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 25-021, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 25-021, site development plan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Okay, thank you. 25-021 is recommended for approval, which would then take us to the zoning ordinance update with the large font print. Thank you very much.
Thank Lisa. She's the one who did that.
We already did.
Okay. Taylor and I are not capable of doing such things. It's impossible.
Too much. I'll use the Excel version for now. What they do, they are the same. So we're gonna, so kind of cover the permitted use table again, just to clear, give it another chance. I did receive Commissioner Stoltenberg's comments just before the meeting. I can bring those topics up, if you don't mind.
Sure.
And then just to kind of just make sure you understand, this is a really important piece of the ordinance. This is where we just had the site plan. That was a permitted use industrial, but, you know, that wouldn't necessarily be allowed in a commercial, you know. That, this is what that is all about. While we're, and we're adding zoning districts and combining zoning districts, we just want to make sure this is, has as much input as possible before we start digging in and writing, drafting actual expository code. So we talked in length, I think, last meeting about how this is just the first draft of this. I did receive some comments from Commissioner Stoltenberg. Let me bring this up.
Good job, Scott.
Scott?
Well, he's looking for those. I did a review with city council info meetings, and we did discover that one of the things we had wanted to do was break out gas stations from convenience stores. So right now, in our existing code, a gas station is a use that's always located with a convenience store. Good, better, and different, that's the way it is. We wanted to kind of break that use out in our code. And the version I had, and maybe you've updated this already, but the version I had at one point, probably the version you had before, we actually hadn't put those back in. Again, this is a living document. We're editing it. We're working on it as we speak. But now we'll have fuel provider or fuel service, whatever the right term is, as a specific use. And it could be located with a convenience store or perhaps standalone. I don't know. You know, those are things we're going to talk about. So, and those are things that have come up and caused us some trouble, gas stations in particular. And so we've, we've broke that use out, made it defined use, not associated always with a convenience store, because it may or may not be. And then we've tried to place it appropriately. And so that exercise, as simple as that sounds, is fundamental. And I think we just wanted to swing back to this one more time, kind of let you know what we're thinking, get your guys' impression of this. It really does build up from here. And I think we just wanted to swing back to this one more time, kind of let you know what we're thinking, get your guys' impression of this. It really does build up from here.
And from a gas station or fueling station, is there any differentiation if it happened to be an electric only? Would it still fall under fuel or generically gas station, a refueling?
Yeah, so I think the term they used and they defined was fuel service or fuel station.
Includes.
And that does, that did include all kinds of fuel, gas, diesel, electric as well. And it's, it's interesting. If you actually look back, fuel stations used to be where you took your car to be repaired. And that, that use hardly ever occurs that way anymore. So, you know, some of these uses that we combined in our mind, the, the fuel station was the place you got your oil changed. And that doesn't, that's not a thing anymore. Those are separate uses. So some of these uses are just because the markets are changing and the way people live there are changing or separating out.
Right. We do have one still on Spruce Hills.
Do we? We still have one. Oh, that's right. That's right.
Which one?
By the way, Old Chicago used to be.
Yes.
Old Chicago is a kind of a classic.
66.
Yep. They have kind of a fuel, oil change, auto shop, little convenience. And this is a principal use table. So that's another thing to think about. Our certain, we have, there's an accessory use table too. And if we, we can send that out, it's drafted. And we haven't focused as much on that yet, but RDG did draft that. It's really, in our current code, we have accessory uses, but they're not, there's not a table for them. So it is a bit confusing to go through what is allowed in, what's an accessory use allowed in your A1 versus your R1. You know, you could have a, a farm with a accessory. I think they have like food stands and all those type of things in there. So those are components that we can definitely share with you and update. So Scott shared with me just a few comments relating to community gardens. So community gardens, technically, it's categorized as agricultural use. Right here, in our current code, we pretty much have them permitted in all districts, all residential or typical residential districts. Some of the thought process for this, there was some push at the State House this year for kind of, you know, securing the rights of gardening on your own land, no matter if the city shouldn't be able to regulate whether you grow corn in your backyard or not. The community garden aspect is a shared garden, so it wouldn't be your personal garden. We don't have, I don't think we have very many examples of that in Benton Grove right now, but our, our neighboring cities definitely do. Vacant lots that have, you know, not developed or we have torn down houses. We might have some, you know, we've had some flood buyouts in areas. That would be a use that would be compatible with the restrictions on those lots, especially the ones that aren't contiguous to a larger area. You just have one empty lot. What can we, you know, we could sell it, but that owner wouldn't be able to use it for much, but open space. But Scott's comment really was about the difference between like a permanent and a temporary use. And I guess you can explain that a little more.
Yeah. And you've mentioned some of the things that thought processes that went through my mind, but on a permanent basis, you're, you know, you're going to have people coming and going all the time. So in my, when I looked at this, I said, well, why would you keep this from a commercial? In, in the scenario where you can have, you have people coming and going, it's, it's a lot more like a commercial entity versus residential. So if you're going to allow it in the residential, you should allow it in the commercial if it's a permanent thing going on. And the same with the light tech. The other part with like the light tech is you think of, I think of the tech generation, so to say, and they tend to be more outdoorsy, but yet techie and nerdy. But they also tend to be a little freer and they like to do things like a little gardening on the side and stuff. So maybe they actually want a community garden in their little area. Ultimately, and I did finish my comments to you, that, you know, we would want something like this in one of the use, the UMA's, where you get some light industrial going, light tech, office park, whatever, and then you incorporate something like this in there also. The, that's the permanent side. The temporary side you've mentioned, you got an empty lot somewhere. And maybe that doesn't apply to this, but you have an empty lot. Do, do we want to keep that from being a community garden or not in certain areas? And again, that might be a different topic for a different place.
And currently we do have, so with our ag uses, so if you were to, we have areas of town that were rezoned and not, aren't going to be imminently developed, so that ag use is still allowed to continue. We don't say you can't stop farming here because you have 40 acres of C3 land or something like that. So it's kind of a, how would I word that? That's a allowed use based off of the previous existing uses that was occurring there. Now, if there was an existing residential neighborhood that were somehow removed, I don't know, disaster demolished spot, and that turned into ag land, that would might, might constitute a zoning. I'm not sure.
I think, you know, ag, ag uses are ag uses. That's different than community garden. Those, those are well protected and preserved. You know, any property that's under ag use will standard ag use until it gets redeveloped. We can't really stop that and we don't want to. I think the community garden piece is more about what Commissioner Stoltenberg was saying, where it's, it's not a personal garden. It's, it's a community garden and we would have some location, maybe multiple acres with fruit trees or, or areas where you could rent and have plots and where do we want to zone those? And I think there is some commercial aspect of that. Certainly if a, if a business or a homeowner wants to have a private garden, by all means, I think they're allowed to do so. And there's not really zoning that. More the community gardens concept. And honestly, I'm, I'm planting this seed, pun intended, because in the buyout area, in the buyout area, a couple of the uses that we can think that would be really good down there would be community gardens or like urban forest or urban fruit orchard. Those type of things where people could come and, you know, maybe pay or not, but have access to those activities and the benefits of them, you know, Whole Foods, Natural Foods, those type of things. So yeah, probably residential, commercial makes sense and we can, we can make that note and put it on the table going forward.
And, and you'll see with some of my other comments later, I'm definitely trying to get this distinction between something that's commercial and residential. So if you're going to include this in all of the Rs, then it should be in all of the Cs pretty much. Because this is more of a commercial thing than it is a residential thing.
And a large scale, it can be pretty busy, you know. You had two or three acres and you had 20 people come up on a Saturday to do their little gardening thing. Yeah, I think you're right.
Maybe the ancillary to an existing, so let's say Teskies or Wallace's or something, if they were in the right piece of property, they could have an acre or two in the back and they sell the products, right? And then people go back and plant them and they come there and they can work. It might be a kind of cool little concept.
Yeah. And that, that urban farming concept is, is in our code as well. So again, separating like community garden where individuals come and garden, urban gardening, urban farming, another different use, I think it's in our code.
A little more intensive, yeah.
Yeah. And that, you know, and that's probably kind of the wave of some of, some of farming is probably to go small scale indoor farming. It's going to happen.
And really, the, the, the point of the use table is to identify these different uses and then the relative impact of those uses. So if the community garden doesn't really have, maybe this is something we put a threshold on of, you know, and maybe it doesn't need to be outlined as a principal use. It's more of a inherent use.
We've probably spent more time on it than it's really worth talking, when we look at how often it's going to come into play. My just opinion was if you're going to have it in the, in the Rs, it should be in this, in C1, two, C2, three, and, and this LTM. And I would even, if anybody said, hey, we should take it out of, you know, R2, R3, I would, I'd say, yeah, I agree. But that's just where I'm at.
Or you take it out of the principal use, you just make it an excess, an accessory use that's allowed in lots of places, you know.
I really want a community garden on my residential property.
With 20 different cars driving up every weekend.
Yeah, the impact would be the visitors. That's the, that's the only thing I could think of.
Anyway, that was, that was my thought process.
We can look into that. Moving on, let's see. Oh, so dwelling, this is, there's two dwelling, so residential. One really changed to the new code so far is really, we used to have all these different type of single family product or residential products be alphabetized in different areas. Now they're all dwelling, comma, what the product is. Some of these are required, I will note, by state code. They protect group residential, for instance, and it's definite, defined in state code, so we have to include those. Others aren't. So we do have more products that are more descriptive, you know, mobile home versus a mobile home park. There's different definitions to those in state code. Your comment about multiple unit residential allowed, so shown right here, that's your multifamily residential. Permitted in R4, permitted in R5, also permitted in C2 and C3, which is what currently it pretty much is. There was a lot of discussion about having a C2 be totally adopted into residential and then it has no commercial component to it. And I think that's one item that we're really going to have to come back and reevaluate. And how do we require a mixed, truly mixed use in the C2? So maybe there's, that's what, and I'll go into that after we're done discussing this, in our supplemental regulations, if residential is a component of a development in C2, maybe we have a threshold of mixed use. Maybe it's 30%, has to have at least 30% of threshold, floor area of commercial. That, that means you can't just put all townhomes in. You actually have to have a mixed use component in there. That's one idea. Maybe the threshold needs to be higher. Other cities have that kind of threshold. There's, of course, there's loopholes to get around that. So we have to be cognizant of that.
And we think that was the intent of the original code of the 2017 update was to have C2 have mixed use. Not, not C2 to be in our district. And, and many times it got turned into an R district, so then push those commercial uses somewhere else on the chessboard and you're running out chess squares.
Well, mixed use can be by, you know, lot area versus vertical, right? So, yeah. It's retail downstairs and it's residential upstairs. Yeah.
How would the, how would the percentages work in a situation where we see a plat developed incrementally? They start out with the, the first thing that comes to my mind is those apartments on Devil's Glen Road, which isn't the best example, but you know, that started out as all one project, but then it got divided because of financing. There's all different reasons.
1200 Devil's Glen, I think you're talking about.
Yes. But, but if we're, if we're requiring a percentage for certain uses and then the project gets divided up, how do you manage that?
So a typical, and we'll say in a greenfield development, we're talking like north of Interstate 80 or we have very few areas left south of Interstate that haven't been rezoned, subdivided. And I'll point out a good example of this. We require that preliminary plat. That is really that concept plan. It gets into the, you know, shows where the buildings are going, where, how the road network's going to work. It's really for the planning stages. It also allows engineering to kind of test the, make sure the engineering, the preliminary engineering kind of works. Can it actually, you know, the stormwater work? That, and that's what we had last month with two subdivisions. We had a preliminary plat. Now those are all residential. Well, actually the Blackstone has a commercial component. So, and that area was reserved for commercial. It's being proposed to be rezoned for commercial. So those, that's how all your different kind of cases and reviews work together. A good example for a previous development, the Forest Green development on the southwest corner of Criswell and Forest Grove, McAmara's development. There was an area on the future that was all zoned A1. But we looked to our future land use map that really outlined a commercial node at the corner of Forest Grove and Criswell. So we knew that was going to be increased traffic, increased development in that area. And we wanted to reserve our corners, which have higher trips and more traffic for some type of commercial. So what they did was on their preliminary plat, they outlined, they reserved an area for commercial. Still hasn't been, I think, to rezone yet, but they're in hold, it hasn't been developed for residential. So we can always go back to that concept. And that really works really well for our greenfield, you know, new areas. When you're working on infill lots, let's think of a, so maybe Tanglefoot Lane.
Well, it's not as much.
It's a little bit harder.
I would say Devil's Glen, well, Edison's gastro pub.
Yep, that's what it's Tanglefoot.
And Dolan's Apartments there, right? So I think it's C2, it might be C3.
Yeah, it's a commercial district.
But the corner, that, that corner, he reserved, put the gastro pub and the strip mall in there. And then did the, this, the C2 housing, the apartments right behind him worked out great. And, and what I think Taylor was trying to say to answer your question, Commissioner, is we would, we would require that the preliminary plat, them to show those, those items. Developer can always come back and say, hey, market's changed. It's not working out. I need to rezone. I need to do something else. It's not, you know, we don't have that big of a stick. But they could, if, if they could do that and show it on a preliminary plat and then develop it in that fashion, great. If something happens, they need to come back and ask for a change. That's what this commission and the council is for.
And I guess the question is, if we had a residential development of that makeup, so we have the townhomes on the eastern section and then we have the commercial on the western section, is that makeup, would that be palatable for a residential in commercial districts? Is that the kind of makeup we're looking for? Are we asking, are we looking for even more commercial? You know, that's the decision making when someone comes in for a zoning. No, you can't do your project. You'll have to rezone it.
But how do you, how do you measure that and make that enforceable?
That, that's right. I mean, it's, it's literally, we could, at the preliminary plat stage, say what we want to see there, have them plat it. But you can't make somebody build something.
Right.
No, no matter what. We can't, you know, if, if, I don't want to jinx anybody. So if ABC Builder came in tomorrow and said, hey, you know, that plat I had with all those homes, I'm not building it anymore. There's, there's no punishment, right?
Unless they, you know, they do have to build roads when, after the final plat, that's, you know, they, but they get sureties for that. You know, we dedicate right away, et cetera. But so I think that's a question of the makeup and how we measure the makeup. That's how I'm getting from the comment.
And is it, is it 30%? Is it 25%? Is it 15%? Does it change with the context of how much other commercial is already around there? Maybe you've already got heavy, heavy commercial, you might let them go a little lighter on the commercial. This is when DCAs really make a lot of sense because you get that master plan and you can kind of work together with the developer to come up with a cool idea. I would say the windmillers have done a great job of this. If you look at shops in the woodlands, shops in the woodlands, and then the residential behind, that is exactly that type of product we tried for.
But if it's a perceived problem that, you know, there was a master plan and now they're not following through. The remedy is that they didn't build all of that. And so that a new plan will have to be submitted if there's a future application for that, correct?
That's right. That's right. They would have to come back and.
No harm, no foul in reality.
And I guess, I don't mean to sound preachy at all, but let's not forget, they're taking the risk. They're the ones that went and got the engineering, bought the ground. You know, we're, we're judging them on our, with our lofty ideals here, but they took all the risk. And so generally that helps these projects. See the developer, they come back and say, hey, there's a problem. I gotta do something else. And we, we talk it through.
And our current zoning map has areas, zones, you know, commercial, residential, et cetera. And there'll be future requests for new rezonings. But we want to make sure that the, on a macro level, we're getting a good, we're in alignment with the realities of what's actually open for commercial. If it's not, if it's all being developed for residential and we're allowing that, then it's not a really good reality. And we're going to get commercial requests in unexpected places. That's kind of what we're trying to avoid.
And you, you, it's harder in your road network because you push trips to unnecessary lengths and distances because people can't get a gallon of milk at the corner store. Because the corner store is not there because it's an apartment complex. And, you know, that is, is just bad planning, textbook 101. So.
And then also to Scott's comments, if there is a residential component, we can still have those supplemental regs that really adopt what we, we're really designing the R2 through R5. And the rest of the residential districts, we have standards. You know, how many townhomes are next to each other, separation distances. We want those standards to at least be mostly adopted if there is a residential component to that. We don't want them just to be wiped clean. And right now in our code, a lot of it is not, doesn't translate over just because it's in a different district, but it's the same product type. So some of that alignment will help, I think, push development in the correct zoning district, I think, if it's not a master plan district. So those are some of the behind the scenes.
Is your RC sub on here? Is, is that your residential commercial where you got it all in the same building?
No, that's actually our conservation subdivision.
Conservation subdivision.
So that is, and that will have to come back to you. We're working on that behind the scenes. But really, I don't expect any, the areas on our future land use map where those are outlined are north of Inter, mostly north of Interstate 80. And then potentially if we remove annex any farther east, that would. And then potentially if we remove annex any farther east, that would be some areas. So south of Interstate eighty, there really isn't any.
Really high topography or low topography, I want to look at areas, lots of relief. You know, try to give the developer, they've got to buy ground, give them a break on density or give them more density and take some of the groundwork away and maybe leave some of those natural stormwater systems in place, you know, so.
And we've been, we've been having discussions with developers one on one, trying to get some feedback on, you know, we're on the planning side. You know, we like to plan things, but how it works in the, on the market and the pro forma of that doesn't necessarily align. So trying to get some input on how that would work. These are, this, this is a novel, it's a novel concept for Bettendorf, but not a novel concept in the region or even in the state of Iowa. So we're looking at a lot of other best practices in other cities, counties, on how they design their regulations. What they were, you know, something by submitting a plan that identifies the environmental sensitive areas. Maybe not even just environmental, if there's an architectural, maybe they keep the barn silo in a, an old, you know, century farm outbuildings, and then they build around that, that's, that's a conservation subdivision too. So there's all different types of elements of that.
Just like keeping the, well, obviously, but the, the, the schoolhouse, the old Forest Grove schoolhouse is at the entry point of Blackstone, you know, conserving that.
And then Scott, you had on retirement residence. So we have an S, so I guess I didn't really understand that one.
Yeah, so, so retirement residence, based on what you had in your Word doc on that, that is a business. And a business to me, again, is commercial. So you have it as a P on R four and R five, to me, that should also be an S, special use permit. Because it's a business, so we need to be very careful where we're gonna throw a business inside residential. And when I, again, when I, when I think of business, an apartment building's not business. Apartment building's residential, it is a business for the owner, but it's residential. A retirement home is a business. It happens to have a lot of residents, but it's a business, it's got employees coming and going. There's different business rules, regulations that go with it. So what my thought there is, any of the Rs, this should be a special use permit to make sure it gets, it's, it's just not easy to put that in the middle of residential. It should be over in the commercial probably, or right on the edge.
For safety and emergency, they do draw a lot of emergency calls.
That's, that's why I brought that up.
Okay, I get that, all right.
I think the Bettendorf Healthcare Center's a perfect example of that. It's right in the middle of a residential neighborhood and that doesn't feel logical to me.
That's on Co Creek, yeah.
Yeah, and maybe when it was put, there's a different story, but now it's, yeah, fish out of water.
We have arterials and our collectors which have better access for shorter trips and better access for.
You certainly want to have a lot of access for firefighting and those type of things.
I can see, okay. Townhouse residential, the same comment was made about the C two.
Yeah, it's again, to me, it's residential, it should be in the Rs, it shouldn't be in the commercials.
And then the whole family home, elder group home, I believe those, I don't quote me on that, but I believe those are defined in state code. They are, so we have to include those, and there's actually private, like stipulations, so we, we're preempted on those, I believe.
Our zoning controls are less on those areas.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, yeah, we do get requests for those. There's different thresholds, I believe, by how many occupants you have or, and so on. But really what we're all doing, we're just defining them, copying those from the state code or referencing, I think we might be referencing the state code even, that's even simpler. So if it changes, then we don't have to update our code, but.
Specifically on the group homes, and you're telling me if it's a state, it's the state. But the, the dwelling group up top, residential and the group homes, when you go to the definitions, they have the same number of people?
Okay.
But they're not in the same categories, you, you've got, like the group residential doesn't have, let's see, doesn't have the A two, A three, R two, there's, they're not the same. But if the explanation is you're stuck based on state code, then I get that.
Yep, we can definitely look into those though. And I believe how the state, usually when the state, under states, that's four fourteen, which for a lot of our zoning, not, there's other components. So there's chapters, but usually they define, they don't go into the, they say residential lots. So when we talk about residential lot, that's really any of the R zoning. And you really could actually argue our A three zoning is just a kind of a rural residential lot. So we just kind of have to make sure we're meeting. And that's more of our, when we get to the, we'll reanalyze this and Chris is gonna have to review this all, so these are good conversations. So anything else, any comments?
I did have one question. One of the dwelling classifications is live work residential. Is that similar to the enterprise lofts that they built downtown in Moline? Right, as you come off the bridge?
Those, those actually are, I believe, commercial first floor and then residential top floor.
Tell me what this is.
Live work would be something where you run a shop, say, on the front half of your, say you had a house. We'll just use a house as example, because it gets more complex when you get into a, other types of building structures. You'd run a shop out of the front of your house in a area, and then you lived in the back part of the house.
Do you know where Sippies is on River Drive in Davenport?
Yes.
So I, I don't know if it's still this way, but the purveyor of Sippies, he lived upstairs, and then he ran Sippies Restaurant downstairs at one time. So he lived in an apartment up and in behind, so it's the shopkeeper lives upstairs, runs the shop downstairs.
And that's in our current code right now.
Yep, typically downtown.
Yeah, but a lot of our downtown, older buildings in downtown have a residential component. Now, it, I believe in our current code, it defines who is living there, and that's what we have to look into.
I don't know if we can do that anymore.
Do that anymore, so we, these are things we have to look at, and really we want to simplify those, and I'll get into that in our conversation. But yeah, I can, I can talk about that in a second.
Thank you.
So to reiterate, this is just, we just wanted to kind of make you, make you aware, make sure that you're at least comfortable with the outline, the concepts. This will be, you can revisit this, give us comments when, feel free to give us when you think of something, you know. This is very easy to change as far as, you know, that's defining the use types, getting the definitions drilled down. And then changing the Ps and the Ss and the blank spots are not too difficult.
Mr. Chairman, my partner next to me was ribbing me because when I gave this presentation to our city council members, and I probably did it to you folks as well. But I, I used to tell you that the, the most important map in the city is that, you know, future land use map, that future land use map is. If there's one page out of the comp plan that matters, then they all matter dearly, I know. But it's the future, it's the future land use map, right? Because that, that is a precursor to zoning. This table, this matrix is, is the equivalent of the future land use map, is if we don't have it defined and we don't have it put in a district, it causes us problems. Or if we have it defined and we have it put in the wrong district, causes us real problems.
Yeah, we've had a few of those too.
And so, you know, that's, you know, he was making fun of me and that's a normal thing too, but that's why we're.
Yeah, because it's easy, Brent?
But that's why we're, yeah, low hanging fruit. But that's why we're belaboring this point, and, and it's not to, you know, browbeat you with this stuff. I would say the other thing that's coming, and Taylor's gonna go over it too, is we have a new, we will make a new zoning map. Doing all of this work, we'll, we'll create a new zoning map for the city, because we got new districts, you gotta put them somewhere, you gotta put them on the map. So more fun to come.
And the general strategy from RDG, working with them, was to, at, at times we had uses that were just way too open, covered different levels of intensity, but they were, it all combined them in one use type. So that's areas they defined minor or major, or to define them by different names. So that, that was, so we did expand the list of use types. They also gave defined uses that we have now that weren't existing in, you know, nineteen eighty-five, when a lot of these uses were created. So I think this helps us try, at least try to identify where there should be some, you know, compatibility issues, transition issues. And that's really what the strategy was going into this.
Do you want to transition into your?
Sure.
Kind of your other summary of where we're at here?
Yeah.
I do have one question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Chart, and it's wonderful work, and as a novice, it's really hard for me to try to give good input. But I, I appreciate the challenge. And so my question is, do you have or does a state help identify what I would call best in breed? Some cities of maybe similar size that has something similar. So we're not having to reinvent the wheel, because, you know, whether it be government or business, if you can picture those top four or five best in breed and pick out the best, you, you, it just helps so much in such a complex subject.
Well, Taylor's done a lot of that research, you know, couple of things is, there's, just like we have international building codes, there's international zoning code. And that's a real good, quick baseline, you know, what do they, what does the international zoning code say for residential setbacks? What do they say for commercial setbacks? How do they treat downtowns? You can kind of look at that book as a real, as a, you know, as a real basic. But then we also have looked at other cities, and I know Taylor's looked at several, but like a conservation subdivision, we looked at one from Pennsylvania that, that looks, you know, appealing. We're also members of Iowa APA, so American Planning Association. So there's, there's resources through them as well where we can get that best in class information, so.
Yeah, and zoning's unique, from an engineering perspective, we have SUDAS. We have an adopted state, you know, standards for roads, for all different types of construction. There's a standard, you meet the standard, you don't meet the standard. Zoning is a very local issue, and we want it to stay local. It's not, the state keeps peeling that away from us. So every city has different unique aspects of it, different history, different context, different geographic areas within the city. So what's best for one city might not be work best for the other, but you can, you know, cherry pick from other cities on. We're looking at our downtown zoning, is there, does it make sense to kind of create its own zoning district? We're looking at some Pierce, Pierce cities and the Quad Cities, what they've done to make it really more design oriented versus, you know, Euclidean zoning oriented. We want to make sure the form, we, we care about the form, how it looks, our downtown more than necessarily what the use inside of the building is. I think that's what we're gonna try to steer that and present you with a form of that, and we have a great downtown master plan as a backbone for that. But yeah, we look, we're always looking and talking to my peers in other cities, and the APA is a great resource. They, you know, have awards every year of, you know, zoning ordinance rewrites and all that stuff. And so we're always looking, always researching, it's a moving, it's a living document for everyone. And these uses trends are always changing, so good question.
As, as he transitions slides, I'll just kind of remind you of the, of the process that we're in. Remember, we did the comp plan, comp plan should lead to a new zoning update, we agree with that, we're working on that. RDG, the comp plan writer, gave us a draft ordinance, we have a draft. It's, it's a heavily drafted outline, remember, we took, went from sixteen or nineteen chapters to thirteen, took words out, got rid of uses that don't exist anymore. Reorganized, reworded, but it's not, it's not done. So now we're taking it to the input phase, and that's the phase we're in, we're in input, gathering input, and then we're gonna go back into that draft and start writing. We're about halfway through, I think, roughly. And so here we're, in probably a few weeks, we'll wrap up the kind of input, the initial input phase, we'll be writing, you won't hear from us for a while. Then we'll come back to you, say, here's what our draft looks like, and that's gonna be more like, here's the chapter in your inbox, flip through it, let us know what you think. You should be well versed with the chapters by that point, we'll, we'll get your input, finalize it, and then we'll go to kind of a final draft scenario where we'll be having an actual vote on the whole document by this commission and by city council. We also have retained RDG services to do a final edit for us as well, just to look for, you know, context mistakes or continuity mistakes, things like that.
Yeah, so bouncing off what Mark just kind of introduced, we've gone through quite a bit. Four chapters, which is, you know, zoning districts, permitted use table. We do have these chapters, some of them are very minor, honestly. Violations and penalties aren't, isn't changing at all, it's very, one page. We've done a lot of sign regulation amendments already. So I don't, we still, you know, we have a lot of on premise signs that we can talk about, some of the calculations. Parking requirements, landscaping, I think there'll be some healthy discussion there in buffering. And then the supplemental regulations really is kind of going off of what Scott mentioned, some of these don't really fit in a permitted use. We don't have, you know, what are there extra standards we need to add for, I know one council member suggested, you know, for certain gas stations. Maybe there, if, there should be a buffer for existing gas stations, you know, that's a code that I believe Davenport has that we could consider. So there's an additional standards, additional standards, I think I have some examples.
Well, the obvious one is lights, remember what we went through with I N T? You know, what are, what are our supplemental use lessons that we've learned about really high big lit sports golf things? You know, we gotta write that down, put that in our supplemental, supplemental use.
And then we have other uses that are, they're either accessory, a very common one that we get, that really keeps our building permit reviews busy. Our swimming pools, fences and accessory, accessory buildings. Everyone wants to build a new garage in their backyard, where we allow, we allow them in the backyard, we don't allow them in the front yard, like next to the street. So those are, you know, tweaking those standards, making sure they're very, are, are we okay with, you know, the size, location, those type of things. Those are all in our supplemental regulations. Because really what the principal standards, the R one, the R two, the R threes, that's just the apartment building or the single family detached home. But they do get, you know, they have swimming pools, they have sheds, they have all those different things. So I kind of wanted to just cover the, just macro level of what we have in front of us. And if you guys have comments or just, you know, things that you've been holding back, please speak out or email us after the meeting or in the coming month. With the site development regulations in chapter five, that's really where you go in your, that's what we look at, does it meet the setbacks? Does it meet the height requirements? Is the, is the density matching what we kind of, what we envisioned in the comprehensive plan? We make sure those are aligned, the lot sizes. Some of the things we've kind of identified where we have a very specific issue with side yard setbacks on our residential structures. When we, the residential structure might be, get built, and then we have basement egress windows. Those egress windows encroach into the side yard setback, and when you have two next to each other, and they're three foot minimum egress windows, and you have, say, have a five yard setback, you have a very little strip of land that makes it problematic for.
If you haven't built a home in the last five, seven years, these, these window wells are now, they're full sized little, yeah.
Foundation, yeah.
Yeah, that you come out, you know, it's not the window well. And so there, there are these whole things where the building code and the zoning code were intersecting. So the zoning code was necessarily maybe allowing too small of a side yard setback. Let's just say it's five feet, but the window, the window well took four and a half feet, so you had a half foot, you know, half foot between.
So maybe that could be, you know.
Solve that.
Addressing, and it's hard to address, maybe the building's built without an egress window at first, and then a new homeowner comes in, wants to finish that basement, put a bedroom in. That bedroom needs an egress window, so then they build the, they have, they need that for, to meet code. So we're thinking about those, you know, smaller items, City of Davenport, for instance, and other cities have a six foot or a six and a half, seven foot side yard setbacks. We're not talking about large increases. We're also, we right now have very, we have two single family districts that vary not much. And we've talked about that combining those. But the lot sizes on the other, if you wanted to build a single family and say, say we don't have a development right now, but in the future maybe a very tiny, not tiny tiny homes, but smaller single family lots. We want to provide an option or zoning code for that, but we have to right size those bulk standards. So an R four single family lot, we have to make sure the bulk standards work for a developer, even, you know, the setbacks, the lot sizes. Same thing with townhomes, we have one townhome standard right now. And even if it's R five, it's the townhome standard is still the same if it's R three, it really doesn't matter. So we want to make, there's a variation, there should be a variation on the density, and that matches the density, the zoning matches the future land use map, et cetera. So we just want to make right size, I mean, lots of discussion with developers on like what, what's going on in some other cities. There's different concepts out there for, and we have some existing, what's the townhome? Creek Hill, or Cedar, Cedar Tree. Cedar Tree is a good example where the lots are very, they just really go around the, the structure, they're kind of called floating lots. And then you have open space that's all in a common area, our zoning code doesn't comprehend that, it just knows, it just can only split lots into, divide them. No open space that's commonly owned, it gets really crazy. into, divide them, no open space that's commonly owned, it gets really crazy. So we're looking at all those things, a little more in the weeds, and, but just wanted to make sure that, you know, we are doing those things. For our commercial bulk standards, we really don't, I think, struggle with those, I don't, we allow like very high, structure height is very high in our commercial zones, we don't have very tall structures downtown.
I can, not on the commercial, not on the commercial side, but just to emphasize the point, I can think of a couple residential subdivisions that we've brought back to you guys, we've had to replat them, because they needed to make the lot lines work because of bulk standard issues. Some of it was for, I remember one in particular where the, the way the condo loan market worked, they, they were having trouble getting people to come in and get a loan on a condo building and be the first one in the building. You know, that, that loan was hard for the buyer to get, so we ended up doing some, some replating for things like that. So there's just some of that stuff in chapter five that we're gonna try and, and help and solve if we can.
And the, the configuration of the billions was virtually similar, it was the same as approved at commission, but it was on one lot, because it was gonna be condoed, but then translating that into lot lines and bulk standards, it didn't work.
It was so hard, we had to get them variances. It was behind Hope Church.
Yeah.
So it was originally condoed, and then they were having problems meeting their buyers because of that hesitancy to be the, the first loan on a condo building, so they came back and said, well, can I lot line these? And we said, sure, we don't care, and he said, but your bulk standards, your setbacks, kill me. And he goes, I'm just trying to build the same exact thing, and we're like, oh, yeah.
So looking at those things, really, we have a lot of, our bulk standards are a little onerous, we have a lot of density calculations, we have FAR values, we have all these different things, they don't, they conflict at times, so simplify those, we still, they'll meet the intent of what, you know, when you look at density for residential or intensity for a commercial, which is usually floor area, we just want to make sure those are in alignment. I don't think there's any other areas that really are, that I've heard from commission or council or developers, but that's kind of, I think I've covered it all for that chapter. But if you think of something or see something, let us know. Supplemental regulations, I kind of touched on, and that's the swimming pools, the accessory structure locations, we also have things that are gonna remain unchanged, we have communication towers and things of that nature, we have to have those in there, there's a process to get those approved, we haven't approved one in a long time, a new one at least. Landscaping and zoning buffering, so Mark's worked a lot on this already and worked with our Trees RS committee, but looking at, you know, our required tree factors really translating to an effective, a good result at the end once they're planted, changing the allowed species, considering allowing credit for maybe some non-tree landscaping, maybe that's shrubber, shrubs, plantings, rocks, I don't, things of that nature. We have a lot of easements in the city which prohibit the planting of trees. So what do you do in that situation when you're required to have twelve trees, and then they all have to be put in this one little small area? I don't think that's the, it's not a very good end result, so we're trying to figure out, are there other ways to make it a, a better development, look better with other forms of landscaping, and give it credit for that. That chapter also has our buffering standards, so if you have a commercial, an industrial next to residential, it has built in spacing. Right now, it's just pretty much spacing, though, is spaced, you know, we have, if you include landscaping, should we decrease the spacing, that kind of thing. So we're just reevaluating those things, making sure they make sense. And I'll, I put berm's in there because that's part of the, and that's come up many times. So we have a lot of trouble with either HOAs or owners on maintaining those berm's, and they become a code enforcement issue, so.
Especially when they're three to one or something like that.
Yeah, so is that what we really, do we want to continue requiring, even allowing these? That's something in that chapter. Parking requirements.
May I ask one thing about the landscaping? And I don't know if this is practical or realistic, but we have requirements for tree factors. Can we make those enforceable into the future? So that if they don't take care of the trees, so many places.
They die off.
They just plant the tree and they don't do anything, and then the tree dies. And sometimes they don't even remove the tree, they just leave, the stakes are there and the tree is there, but it's all dead.
Greg and I have worked a lot on the landscaping chapter, and I don't recall, Greg, maybe you do what it says, but I think it's part of the site plan in perpetuity.
It is, we, we had to enforce that in some cases, and it, it came down to one instance where we almost went to the magistrate to get something done. But if you do put people on notice, they've been pretty good about replacing out the older, it is an obligation for each subsequent owner to place that tree factor back in if it is deceased, if you will, or it's diseased, and they are required to replace it. So it's in perpetuity, as Mark said.
We also have, we, we have held up strafed occupancies for, for trees, I don't really love to do that, because sometimes it's just the market or the weather or whatever. But, you know, we, we could actually not let you occupy a building because you didn't put the right landscaping in.
So that, when, in a site plan, that's, you know, say we have this development that we just reviewed, and, you know, the, the trees aren't in, or it's not meeting the landscape, that's a fine, that's an inspection, actually, so it gets reviewed again in the field. So I would reiterate that, we, it's hard to do that in the winter, and then you get a promise in the summer to get those plans, and so we have to work with, it's a, it's
Well, Greg, I'm happy to hear that people are cooperative on that issue.
That's an issue.
Chapter eight is our parking requirements. I think we, and that was just brought up by Guy, we have a very complex methodology, it doesn't, it differs from use type to use type, some are based off employees, some are based off of gross square footage, or net square footage, or all these different types of methodologies, and it's, it was adopted by a standard parking manual from the nineteen nineties, which I think needs to be, there's better sources for that, but there's also, we can also, you know, kind of tailor those resources to what we think is best for Bettendorf. But, so I think consolidating these parking use types, we have all these use types in our permitted use table, but they don't all need, necessarily need it, they can be combined for parking requirements. So that's what that consolidating use, parking use types, makes it easier to administer and more logical. We don't want to, every time we come up to it, really have a trouble trying to calculate these things.
Input there too, so you drive around town, you see areas where it's just chronic under, underspaced, overparked, kind of deal, and I think about the area behind Linkwesford by the big apartment back there, they're out in the street, they're all over the place. There, there's several places like that around town where the shops at the Woodlands, they only allow parking on one side of the street, and they're parking all the way down and around the corners, it, there's clearly not enough parking up there. So whatever's causing those issues, if we could be addressing some of those in the, in the redo, like, okay.
So on the Woodlands, I would say, there is, some people are, customers are choosing not to park in that parking lot, and I don't know why, because I'll have, I'll go there and think, oh my gosh, this place must be packed, and then I'll go park. So I don't, I don't know what that's about, but yes, Taylor and I would both argue, I think we'd all, on this table, argue that our parking code does not scale, it hits this middle sized stuff just fine, but really big stuff and really small stuff, it can't, it just crumbles, it just breaks down, and maybe that's where we go, we're gonna figure it out ourselves, we'll do some type of, you know, negotiation with the developer or something.
No, it's always been hard to try to right size parking, and then you can never predict popularity of places, so Oak Grove, for example, the one you're talking about, has been insanely popular. It meets all the code requirements, but they cram every inch of square footage that they can and get people in there on a Friday, Saturday night. Part of that's operational, they have their employees park on the street. Which they shouldn't be, you know, on a normal night. Central standard was the same way when it opened.
Yeah.
Same thing, we had people parking on Falcon, and, and usually the, the energy dies down and it tends to equal out, but there are still, still cases where it's not, and, I mean, you know, Tanglewood was a perfect example as well, you know, but at least they were able to provide some additional parking, but trying to design for popularity is really difficult.
Yeah, and I think from a, you're getting into some very dangerous water if you're basing your use, parking uses off the quality of a service, not the use type, then you're going down legally.
And the opposite, the opposite side is, look at, look at the former Hobby Lobby building, I don't think we want to do that again, you know?
No, was that as a result of some requirement at the time?
I'm sure it was, I'm sure it was.
Large shopping centers.
Yeah.
It was K and K, before it was K and K, what was it, Greg?
Grant.
Yeah, Grant, it was Grant, and it was K and K, trivia question for you, so anyway, we're getting close to your, you know, Chairman, you had kind of an hour and a half shut off, so whatever you want to do, we're happy to keep talking.
This is a natural point, that's fine, if you got five or ten to go to.
Yep, really quick. But yeah, we're looking at, you know, we'll bring these forward to you, but this is just kind of giving a peek to the future, and we're probably trying to make it a little more consolidated for the next meeting or two. And we might reduce or increase parking use on certain uses, you know, that's, that's that discussion, I think it'll be a lively discussion. On sign regulations, we've really done a lot with billboards, a lot.
Banners, you did your banners, that was a big one too, billboards and banners.
And banners, yes. But I think one thing we get a lot from the sign industry is simplifying and making our on premise signage much more predictable and readable, and they don't even know how to, it's very complex, it's like the size of the lot with, with divided by two of the, it's kind of crazy. So that'll be adopting a best practice, probably, we're, I'm not trying to reinvent the, the wheel, so we'll look at some other sign ordinances, and I don't think we really have a problem with on premise signage as far as like, you know, we have pretty much adopt, each business adopts pretty much the same size sign as the next door neighbor, and it's pretty consistent. And then maybe reevaluate some structure types and those sizes, monuments versus pole signs, that, et cetera. We already went through, Mark already went through this, this is just a, that's that timeline, we're on schedule. And kind of going forward, right, as I mentioned, we'll maybe try to consolidate some of these topics for, from, for input, and then I think we'll have one meeting that we, I get the map out with circles all over it, and that's the zoning map, so that'll be a, a meeting itself, but that's gonna be needed to do, we'll need to do that. And then the only really other thing, maybe just kind of, we haven't really discussed our DCAs and if we do a downtown form based zoning, not really how the zoning works, but how the review of a plan works, what if we propose this, how does that review work? I think we should discuss that. We have a DCA approved for Genesis, but what, we haven't got to the site plan review of that yet, so we kind of want to touch base and get some feedback on the steps of that review.
That we aren't stuck in the same situation, if you remember, out at Glimbrook Circle South, when they came back and they kept trying to change the plan, change the plan, and we were like, what is this? And so we wanted to tighten that up a little bit, if you remember that case.
Absolutely, yeah.
And that is all I have.
All right, thank you, Taylor, thank you staff for all the work in getting us to this point with much more recognized yet to come, so is there anything else for the good of the order? Any updates from council on anything we need to know?
All your cases are moving, we've had first readings on those rezonings relative to the Blackstone, you know, they're, they're moving through council, so no, no problem.
Thank you, we are adjourned.